Welcome to our coverage of the election 2020 on Sweetwater Now. We were going to do some in-person forums. The venues weren't working out. So what we've ended up doing is these online forums. Dave and I are going to host the first one. We're going to bring in some candidates from Rock Springs City Council Ward Four and talk to them. And then throughout the week, we're going to bring any contested race. We're going to bring in those candidates, Dave. We're going to talk to them, let the public get to know them a little bit better. You know, it's not the perfect way, but it's what we're able to do this year with what's going on. It seems kind of like this is just the way right now.
Yeah, right. I mean, we looked at some venues at the college and around town and the libraries, of course. And it just wasn't going to be practical for us to be able to do these forums, you know, inside a room where we invited the public and we had a number of candidates all sitting next to each other. So we put together these little Zoom forums. We hope that you enjoy them. We encourage you to check them out on Sweetwater Now, get to know your candidates a little bit better and find out what's important to the constituents here in Rock Springs.
Sure. And Dave, we want to thank our community leaders, Jenner Wyoming and also Genesis Alkali. They partnered with us tonight. Without them, this type of coverage would not be available. So we just want to say a special thank you to them and we hope you enjoy.
Good evening and welcome to Sweetwater Now's continued coverage of election 2020. I'm Dave Aronbell along with Gary Collins. And tonight we're going to be talking to the candidates in the Rock Springs City Council Ward Four race. We've got here on our Zoom meeting Brent Batolo. We have RJ Peeper and Larry Elder. And if we are joined by Rose Mosby, we'll, we'll get her in here as well. Guys, just want to let you know by way of the rules, we're going to give each of you three minutes, up to three minutes to introduce yourselves, tell us a little bit about why you're deciding to run, whatever you'd like to say in those three minutes. And then we've got a series of questions that we're going to ask each of you and give you an opportunity to answer. We'll give you 90 seconds to answer on each one of those. And then at the end of the forum, we'll give you about two minutes to, to wrap it up. So it's going to be conducted very much like, like a regular forum. And if you guys are ready to go, we'll get started.
Let's do it.
Okay. Let's see, why don't we go ahead and start with Brent Batolo? He's going to give us three minutes here and take it away, Brent.
Hey, thanks for hosting this tonight. I really appreciate it. And the RJ and Larry joining in. Hey, I was born and raised in Rock Springs, third generation. Went to the University of Wyoming, graduated from there. Have worked in Sweetwater County with various industries, the soda industry and the coal mining and, and, and power generation and oil and gas. I've been an industrial parts distributor as well as a manufacturer's parts representative. And it's, it's time to, for me to give back to the community that's been so good. It's been good to my kids. It's been good to my family. I want to take the opportunity to thank David Tate for filling in this, this position for as long as he has. I think he's done a wonderful job. And I just, I just, I think Rock Springs is in a critical time as far as economics are concerned. And I want to do the best that I can to, to help out.
All right, let's move on to RJ Peeper. RJ, go ahead.
Good evening. Thanks to everybody watching, to my fellow candidates and to our hosts. Like to thank, start by thanking Sweetwater Now for hosting this forum. Gary, Dave and the team over there have done a great job of filling this void that we've had by not being able to gather in person. And they're putting forth the best effort to inform voters the best they can to make this decision on election day. I too would like to thank David Tate, who has sat for a number of terms in the, in the seat and for all the hard work he's put in over the, over the years. I'm a third generation native of Rock Springs. Professionally, I've worked in a wide array of industries. I spent 10 years in the oil and gas industry, a few more in the construction field associated with it. I also worked in wildlife and public land conservation, fighting for your public lands. And today I operate a hundred-year-old small business that my wife and I bought last October. I sit on a number of boards, including Sweetwater County Solid Waste District Number One, Wyoming Professional Photographers Association Board of Directors and the Sweetwater County Library Foundation. And I am a certified professional photographer. I believe this is a diverse set of experiences that makes me a great fit for this seat on city council. Because I've, I've learned to view things from multiple, multiple perspectives and to think critically when, when making big decisions. I decided to run because Rock Springs is a crossroads. We're, we're in trouble economically and we really, we need to deal with this reality, even if we'd like to stick our heads in the sand and wait for the next boom. I'm not the kind of guy to stick my head in the sand. This is a problem we can't afford to ignore, because what have, what happens when the next boom doesn't come? As your councilman, I'll, I'll make decisions based on what's best for the residents of Rock Springs, the taxpayers. This isn't a popularity contest for me. I don't care who, who does not like or does like who. I just want to make Rock Springs the best community that we can. And that means working with everybody seated at the table. My vision for this community is one that has a broad economic base. So we can enjoy the quality of life that we know during the good times and to eliminate or at least minimize these bad times like we're in. This is the single largest issue we face today. And if we can get through this one, I think we can handle pretty much anything. Rock Springs has so much to offer. We have a wonderful downtown, great small businesses in our public lands. We're perfectly situated for those who love wide open spaces like we do. My focus will be three things. First, foster growth of small, existing small businesses and make this a great place to start a new one. Second, advance projects that are already in the planning stages and find new opportunities to bring diverse industries to Sweetwater County. And last, to work to capitalize on huge number of tourism dollars that simply just passed through this town. We could be a destination, not just a bump in the road for a quick splash of gas and a snack. I look forward to sharing your ideas in this forum and I'm excited to earn your vote. Thanks.
Right on time.
Wow, that was perfect timing, RJ. Good job.
He must have practiced that. That was like three minutes.
Okay, and last but not least, we'll hear from Larry Elder. Go ahead, Larry.
Hi, my name's Larry Elder and I'm running for city council here in Ward Four also. And I too would like to thank both Gary Collins and Dave Aron Bell and Sweetwater Now for putting this on. They're sponsors of Jenner and Genesis Alkali. And I'd also like to thank all of the members of the community who are interested enough in being involved and being informed by what the four of us will have to say. And I want to thank them for their time also. I moved here almost 31 years ago from Powell, where I was a dairy farmer on the family farm. I also was involved in the school district and had other occupations in Powell before I moved here to be the assistant manager at the ICE Arena. Four years ago, with the retirement of my supervisor, I moved up into the management of it. And then I also moved here with my wife of 38 years. We raised three kids. They all went to Western. They all graduated from the University of Wyoming. And now I have three grandchildren and my two daughters still live in this community. I was also a volunteer at the ICE Arena as well as being a paid professional. I coached numerous hockey teams that was just on my own time. I was involved in the ICE Arena and bringing many outside people into our community in the, in the tourist aspect of things like RJ was talking about. So I have quite a bit of experience there. And to just sum it up, the reason that I wanted to run is at this point in my life, I would love to give back to this community that has been so wonderful. And I've, I've done well and I've contributed in the ICE Arena. But I would like to take the, the skills and talents that I have and take them to a bigger stage and be challenged by that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, guys. We appreciate that. We're going to move on to the, the question portion of the forum. And just to remind you guys, we've got six questions. We'll give you each 90 seconds to answer each question and we'll keep a timer on you here. So we'll let Gary go ahead and start the, the question portion.
All right, Larry, I'm going to start with you and I'll ask, I'm going to ask the same question to each of you. But right now, what do you believe is the biggest issue facing the city of Rock Springs?
The biggest issue will obviously be the budget and the lack of income coming into our community, coming into the county, coming into the state. We are, we are under very trying times. There is no doubt about it and they are not looking to get better. They are looking to get significantly worse. Our job will be conserve, you know, money as much as we possibly can, as well as looking for new avenues to boost economy, to bring jobs, to, to put revenues back into our financial situation.
Okay. And Brent, the same question. What do you believe is the biggest issue facing the city of Rock Springs at this moment?
I'll echo some of what Larry said. Obviously, the budget is huge. I was talking to one of the current council members not too long ago. And I was informed by him that there's a $7 million budget deficit that I think is a huge hurdle for us to be able to overcome. We need to make sure that the basic services that we offer now are covered. And I think that's going to be tough enough as well as trying to, to gain more revenue in, in other places. You know, we, we can't turn on the switch for new revenue right now. But we have to start building to be able to turn that new switch on for new revenue. And we can't continue down the boom and bust cycle and rely on that. It's just, it just doesn't seem like the best route to, to go. And, and, and that's what we've done in the past.
All right. Thank you, Brent. And RJ, same question. What do you believe is the biggest issue facing the city of Rock Springs at this moment?
Well, it sounds like we're all in agreeance here. It's definitely the economy. Our revenue shortfalls are, are way down. And, and I, I agree with, with Mr. Batolo that having basic services covered is going to be tough enough. But I disagree when he says that we just can't turn the switch on something new or yet. I, I think that is one thing we need to actively be pursuing. Because if, if, if we don't find new, new revenue sources and soon, we're going to be in a whole world of hurt because we're, we're, we're getting ready to lose other revenue sources. You know, with, with the possible pending closure of Jim Bridger. That's 700 jobs with, with, with the mines that associated with them. That's, that's hundreds of more jobs. So, so right now is the time to look to replace those industries and to get something new in here that fits and fits what we do here. So I, I think, I think we need to be going after those new revenue, revenue sources, not now, yesterday. And we're, we're slow on the uptake here, but we, we need to get on it fast. So that, and that's what I want to do as a councilman is just try and find those new revenue sources and, and broaden our economic base.
All right. And so this is kind of a part two of that question. And RJ, I'm going to go to you first. What about in your own ward? What do you believe the constituents of Ward Four would say might be their biggest challenge or something that they see as their biggest issue in that area?
You know, I, I don't know what the hugest issue in, in Ward Four would be. Because I feel like we have this whole, this whole situation looming upon us. So it's, it's, it's still going to be the economic situation we're in. Downtown Rock Springs is within Ward Four. We still have empty buildings. We still have a number of, of buildings that are great places for small businesses, for other businesses to come in. So, so part of that economic fork, or not fork, but plan could include, you know, finding ways to occupy some of these buildings, finding grant monies that are out there, both at the state and federal levels to help improve those buildings, to make it nicer for businesses and more attractive for businesses to come in. You know, keeping this downtown vibrant like we like is, you know, I remember how it used to be 20 years ago. There was nothing down here. Now, now as a downtown business owner, I love it. There's, there's people downtown and it's, it's great. And I want to keep that going. And I think the residents of Ward Four deserve that.
That's great, RJ. Same question, Brent. When it comes to Ward Four, what do you believe the biggest issue or is facing the constituents in that area?
Well, I think the downtown area is, is key. And I attended the city council meeting last week and I really enjoyed the discussion regarding the old first security bank building. I think if we can get some of that going, however, time is of the essence there. They have to find it, from what I understand, I could be wrong, but they have to find an anchor tenant for that building by mid-December or they run the, the, the chance of losing the grant money, the second phase of the grant money. I think downtown Rock Springs could be huge as far as a, an entertainment center or a restaurant center or whatever. A couple of years ago, I shared a plan with Chad Banks to put a plaza down near the old National Bank Building on the opposite end of South Manny, towards the URA Building that could bring in a lot of, a lot of potential business and make it more of, of an economic center. I think we have to go after grant money, after grant money, after grant money so that we can get that revitalization that we need in downtown Rock Springs. I think it's, I think Ward Four is a key to, to making the city work very well because of, of, of the, okay, the economic base that's there.
All right, thank you, Brent. All right, Larry, same question. Ward Four, what do you believe your constituents there think is the biggest issue facing that area or your ward?
Okay, well, I agree with both what RJ and Brent said. I think there is the opportunity to inject into Ward Four with the downtown. But that aside, when I've talked to the, to the constituents, the, the members of Ward Four, they're very concerned about the country. They, they're almost distraught over the shape that the country is in. The next thing they're very distraught about is Corona. And if you kind of correlate that, guys, to where all three of us are sitting, what they want to do is believe in their, their local government so that we can give them some confidence to get through this part of all of our lives. I really think that the guy they meet, the guy they can talk to, needs to inject these people with the ability to stay calm, have hope and get through this.
All right, thank you, Larry. So for question three, and some of you have touched on this, but since downtown Rock Springs is part of this board and, you know, like we've mentioned, this first security building, how involved do you believe the city council should be in future development of downtown Rock Springs? And, and Larry, I'm going to give you that one.
Okay. I mean, it's city council's job to regenerate, rejuvenate anything that we can where we have an old community and the old part of town has so many things that it can still offer. It goes back to question one, though. Can we balance it to make it work? And in these times, that's going to get tricky. It would be great if we can. They're all facts and figures that need to be looked at. They need to have a scrutinous eye. But we do have to make cautious decisions that will be for the betterment of the community in the long run.
All right, thank you, Larry. And RJ, same question. How involved should the city council be in, in the future development of downtown Rock Springs?
I believe the city council should be heavily involved. I, I don't necessarily advocate for the purchase of land and, and buildings and things like that unless it's, unless it's absolutely necessary. But I, I think, I think the city could very well play a huge role in, in attracting some of these businesses that could, you know, or, or try to, try to somehow invest in some of these downtown businesses. Chad over at the URA does a great job with the facade grants and, and the other grants that he's got. I, I think, I think if the money can be found, the, the, the city could, could help, help develop downtown a lot, lot more than, than we already are. I mean, downtown and, and until, until the seventies was, was where everything is. Then we've, we've moved west and we've, we've kind of forgotten our roots here downtown. And I, I think, I think a little, little heavier hand down here would really make a difference.
All right. And Brent, same question. How involved do you believe the city council should be in the future development of downtown Rock Springs?
I think we need to look at those beautification things that we can do to help the community gather more in downtown Rock Springs. I'm going to give credit to RJ. RJ is a, a young guy who, who a, you know, took a risk and is, and is invested in a business in downtown Rock Springs. So I give my hats off to him. We have to find more people like that. We have to garner more ideas. You know, I don't have all the answers, but let's get out there and we need to ask our constituents, what would you like to see down there? And then go out there and try to find people to fit that need. Is, I think, I think that's, that's huge. Also, do what we can to help the people that are down there. You know, I'll give you, I'll, I'll give you an example. The, the PIA family has been down there. We need to do whatever we, we can to, to show families and businesses like that that we appreciate them.
All right, thank you, guys. Those are good answers, really good answers. I'm going to shift gears just a little bit now away from the economy and ask you, how will Rock Springs and the council continue to navigate through the COVID-19 pandemic? And Brett, we'll go ahead and start with you on this one.
So this one really hits home with me. A very close person in my life lost her father to COVID this last week. And we were, we were quarantined because of it. And, and, and I saw what it can do to a family. For a family to have to say goodbye to somebody via a Zoom call was one of the most difficult things I've ever seen and ever taken part of in my life. And it was a hard thing to do. I think we need to educate people as best we can. I think that we, 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 we don't need to overact. But I think we need to be cognizant of one another and do what's right for one another and spread that word among the community. But like I say, this thing isn't going to go away anytime soon. In November, I tested positive for H1N1. And, you know, that was a, that was a thing 10 years ago. So we're, this thing isn't going to go away. So we have to have, you know, procedures in place and follow them.
Okay, thank you, Brent. Let's see, I'm going to go to RJ next. And again, same question, RJ. How will Rock Springs and the council continue to navigate through the COVID-19 pandemic?
You know, I think, I think the council has done, the council and the city has done a decent job at managing it with, with restrictions in at least city buildings and following Governor Gordon's orders. You know, I, I, I think Brent's exactly right. It's going to be around a while. We're going to be, we're going to be doing this for probably the rest of the year and into, into the next. And it's, it's scary. It, you know, and, and I feel for the family that Mr. Batolo talked about. He, I, I can't even imagine what that would be like. So I think, I think if we just encourage everybody in Rock Springs to be good humans to each other and to, to help protect each other. Because, because that's the, that's the community I grew up in. Is this community is the one I grew up in. And, and we always looked out for each other. We always helped each other. Whether we liked each other or not, sometimes when somebody was in, in deep trouble, somebody, somebody random you never expected would come and help you. And that's the community I want to live in. And that's the community I hope everybody else wants to live in. And that's by doing things like wearing masks when we go to the store, by, by maintaining six feet distance and things like that. I really, and I think the city, hopefully they won't have to be in a position where they have to put any more restrictions on people. But if it gets bad here locally, I mean, we, we.
Time.
County situation.
Okay, thank you, RJ. And Larry, your thoughts? How will Rock Springs and the council continue to navigate through the COVID-19 pandemic?
Brent, I too want to send my condolences. I'm very sorry for your loss also. That are, those are tragic, tragic situations. Unfortunately, they are the realities of the situation that we're in. Just like RJ said, I think our city council has done a commendable job. In our community, with the wearing of masks, the dictation has been coming more from corporate of major chains in wearing of masks in the stores when we're in public. It doesn't change the fact that the governor and our local, you know, city council mayor have done a good job of trying to keep the members of this community safe. I mean, we are coming up against what I believe is our biggest hurdle when the kids go back to school. So we are also going to be trusting the school district to continue to make equally good decisions for the protection of all of us also. But I think the, the closest one we can see on the horizon is when the kids go back. And we'll cross our fingers and hope that we're all ready for that one.
Okay, thank you, Larry. We're just going to keep it right here with you for the next question, Larry. And that question is, how can Rock Springs improve its economic diversification?
Well, like I said in the, in the first interview that I, that we did, you know, we do have some infrastructure in place. We have IAD, we have the UP. And if there's any, any way that we can lure industry or even distribution into our community with those two things that are already here, those could give us a great economic boost without having to do a whole new infrastructure for a new industry looking to come in. I think those are things that can be pushed and, you know, allow, you know, people to see what we really do have to offer. And yes, it's a, it's a little bit of a stretch distance-wise from major hubs, be it Salt Lake or Denver or Billings. But at the same time, we do have opportunities in us, in this shrinking world that we live in to where those opportunities, if companies knew, could also take advantage. The other thing that we're not talking about is with COVID, a lot of these people have been working from home and a lot of them are looking to get out of the community they live in, but keep their job and work remotely from here on, which could bring people into a community exactly like Rock Springs because of what we have to offer. Also the airport, I can throw that in there also. But I think those are the kind of things in the modern era that are opportunities that we have right before us without doing an awful lot that would give us these opportunities.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Let's move on to Brent. Brent, again, how can Rock Springs improve its economic diversification?
You know, Dave, you and I touched on this the, the last time that we talked. And I honestly believe, you know, we've heard about a industrial complex east of Rock Springs. And I typically, I don't really agree with that because all the infrastructure that we need is in between Rock Springs and Green River. I think there's plenty of land out there to, to develop. There's water, there's rail, there's electric, there's fiber optics. There's everything that we need right there. So I think we could do it as far as infrastructure is concerned right now. I think that we need to look outside the box. And one of the things that I've been disappointed in is Sweetwater Economic Development Coalition. I have not seen a lot of activity from them over the years. In fact, I know that, I believe it was in 2017 that there was a gap analysis that they had paid for. And it showed where we needed these businesses to come into Rock Springs and nothing was ever done with it. I think we need to pick up on, on something like that. Maybe that, that gap analysis is 80% accurate at this time. Maybe we look at getting a new one and building upon it. But I believe we need industry to create well-paying jobs that helps bring the, the restaurants in and the clothes. Ran out of time, sorry.
Good job, though.
I could go on that one forever.
It's not, it's not easy when you, when you don't have a clock right in front of you. Okay, let's wrap it up with RJ. Again, RJ, the question is, how can Rock Springs improve its economic diversification?
Well, I, I can, I can echo what Mr. Elder and Mr. Batolo said. But I, I think, I think bringing those industries in, whether it's on the west side of town between Rock Springs and Green River, there's plenty of space. There's a wonderful, there's the old highway there. That would be a great location. But we also do have that, that area east of town. And I think we just need to light a fire under that. We've, we've been talking about it for far too long with no action. Let's move on it and bring some of those. One thing I would do is that there's a company up in Sheridan trying to permit and, and start the very first coal mine in the last 20 years. We're, we're facing a, a time where we're going to be. We're we're facing a a time where we're going to be declining in our in our local coal mines. So. Why don't we call this company up and say, hey, we know your neighbors don't want you to move in. We got a perfectly good coal mine here that'll provide you all the coal you want for whatever for. The carbon fiber development that you're doing. Why don't you move to Sweetwater County, question Sweetwater County? Well, we use some of the money, build this park and you can you you can do your business all day long here. That's something we can do right now. Again, like I said earlier, the the tourism aspect, we have so many people coming through, going to the parks and everything. When we have national park quality lands in our backyard. Why haven't we sat down with the B L M? Rock Spring fits the seat of the table with the R M P process. Why don't we sit down with the B L M and try and find a way to develop those plans to work for us?
Okay, thank you, RJ. Okay, we're down to our final question here, gentlemen, and. This question, we'll start with RJ on this one. Have you had a chance to review the city's budget and what are your ideas in balancing that budget?
You know, I've I I've I've only skimmed it. I haven't had time to to dig in deep. I've had a busy couple of months. I recently was married, so I I haven't had time, but. That's something I plan to do right away. Now that things are freed up and. Right right off the top of my head. I'll I'll say right off the top of my priorities. Preserving jobs is going to be number one. We're going to make sure we keep as many of our city employees as we can. And then and then cut, cut and trim the fat where we can. I believe in funding, still funding things like parks and rec arts and things like that as much as we possibly can. But. There's 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 times where that's that's got to, that's got to. Take take a second, take backseat to things like fire, police, water, roads and infrastructure. So I I think there's a striking a balance between your your critical resources and 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 the extra things you'd like to do. And then the the very last thing is is nobody wants to do it and I I certainly don't myself. But look at, look at our workforce and see. See what, and then again, that's very, very last thing we should ever ever think about, but it's on the table.
Okay, thank you, RJ. Let's go to Larry next with this final question. And Larry, have you had a chance to review the city's budget and what are your ideas in balancing that budget?
No, I have not seen the budget specifically. So, but being a city employee, I am familiar. And so. Of course, just like RJ said, essential services are going to go forward. Their have tos. Non-essential services, both with employees, facilities, will have to fall under more scrutiny. It's just the nature of the beast. Not fun decisions to make, but the budget is a priority. We have to operate operate. Within our means. We can't continue. To operate in the red. It's not an option.
Okay, thank you, Larry. And Brent, we're going to throw it to you here one last time for this last question. Have you had a chance to review the city's budget and what are your ideas in balancing that budget?
I haven't had the chance to review it, but I've I've tried to talk to as many of the council members as I can to get some of the ideas. That I have or that I've come up with. One, I mentioned the seven, $7 million deficit that we have. I think we have to look at, I want to preserve every job that we can. As as jobs open up through attrition, we may have to look at, okay. Do we need to fill that? Can we fill that? We have to be smart as far as personnel decisions are concerned. I think reallocating. Some of the personnel to perhaps, maybe we install a a purchasing department within the the city. To where we can go out and look to 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 purchase. Services and product that the that the city uses in a smarter way to help reduce that deficit. I don't think we're going to be able to reduce it all, but I think we can take some positive steps in in that. And continue to look and dissect the budget. As best we can and 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 do what we need to do to find out those opportunities.
Okay, guys, that brings us to the end of our question section. Excellent job on all of those questions. You guys did a really nice job of answering those. And Gary, you can close this up for us here.
Sure, guys. So at the end here, we're just going to give you each two minutes to give your final pitch on why should the people in Ward Four vote for you? And so Larry, we're going to go with you first if you'll give us your pitch.
Okay. Well, the bottom line is why to vote for me is these tough economic times. Is we're going to have to tighten our belts and I believe I'm the guy from, you know, with the the skills and the talents to help do that. I believe I can look at things objectively and make hard decisions. They're going to have to be made. But being said. I also, my heart is with keeping as many city employees employed as we possibly can. I'm very concerned about their jobs. And I want, I want to keep those jobs whenever possible. My platform has always been, guys, my love for this community comes around the people. And. I want to be able to conserve the opportunities, the events, the programs for our senior citizens, our youth. And what's closest to my heart are families. I want to be able to have the families that are in this community. To have the opportunities, the enjoyment and the sheer thrill of living here that all of us had. And for that to move forward into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. All right, Brent, same thing to you. Two minutes, give your final pitch on why should the people in Ward Four vote for you?
I'm extremely looking forward to serving the people of Rock Springs. Like I said before, it's been a very, very good town. To my to my family. Over the years. The two things that I really, really want to look work on. Is is transparency. I think we need to be as transparent within the city government as we can. Each member of the city council and the mayor has to be accountable for their actions is number two. And 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 the third that I didn't get to talk to in in the earlier question is I would like to come up with. A business plan and not just me. A collective effort of a business plan that specifically. Pinpoints growth, industry to go after, how to do it, where to do it and those kind of things. And get community involvement in that as best we can. I think it's important to get as much community involvement as we can because this business plan could be. The 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 answer to the to the crossroads that we are in right now.
That's great, Brent. Thank you. And RJ, same thing. Two minutes, give your, give us your final pitch on why should the people of Ward Four vote for you?
Well, first off, I wanted to say one more time, thank you guys for putting this on and thank you, Mr. Elder and Mr. Matolo for Matolo for. Joining us here tonight, too. You know, I I too just want to give back to the community. I've 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 been here 35 years on Friday. And. I really. I I I haven't left because I've not found any other place that is. As good as living in Rock Springs. And I just, I I want to keep that going. So I I want, that's why I want to see that that diverse economic future to 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 get get out of this boom bust cycle. My. My wife, she she's doing her her dissertation on boom bust cycles. And part of it is because she's moved here and 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 is invested in this in this community as well. And. I'm learning more that we don't have to accept that. We don't have to accept that normal. Because, you know, it would be easy to sit here and tell you all sorts of feel-good things to get your vote. I really, really would. But the truth is, none of that matters. This is the hardest time we've seen in 40 years. I I wasn't here the last in the last bust in in the eighties. I really wasn't. But I'm here now and I'm scared. Coming out of this isn't going to be easy, but it's now, right now is the time to step up for the future of Rock Springs and. And I'm up to this task because our future depends on it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, RJ. And that brings us to the end. We want to thank each of you, RJ Peaper, Brent Batolo and Larry Elder for joining us. Rose Mosby was not able to join this evening, but we want to thank all of you that we're able to and we hope that this allows. Your constituents to learn a little bit more about you. We're also going to give them an opportunity to, if if we didn't think of everything. We're going to take some other questions and then we'll reach out to you guys if we, if there's anything specific or directed right to you, just so you'll have the ability. To have that and 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 answer that as well. So with that, we thank you for joining.
Yeah, and we also want to thank our our community partners who are making this possible. Of course, Jenner LLC, Jenner Wyoming LLC and Genesis Alkaline. Again, guys, we appreciate your time and good luck to all three of you. I think all three of you would make outstanding councilmen, so good luck to you and your campaigns.